I perform better with one.
He's got courage.
I do it, I do it.
It helps.
It helps.
Seems brighter in here.
They did something, yeah. Definitely needed it too.
Good evening, everyone. It looks like it's 5:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting in order. We'll begin with the invocation. Andrew, would you be so kind?
No, I would like to ask you for your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions to try to better our community this evening. We wish for your wisdom as we work through the progressions of this evening, and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Miss Lee?
Here.
Back and still?
Here.
Tatum?
Here.
Luger?
Here.
Here.
Carlin?
Here.
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 All right, if you didn't get a copy of the agenda, there should be one back here in the, as you walk in the doorway to your right. I would like to point out a few things, and then we'll go ahead and move forward. Meeting procedures. Public may address a specific item at the pleasure of the mayor. To recognize the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and address, and limit remarks to at least two three minutes or less. Out of respect to the city employees, request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city manager, administrator, excuse me, or mayor. An individual in violation will be declared out of order. Open Meetings Act, a current open, current copy of the Open Meetings Act in Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Consent Agenda, all matters under Consent Agenda are considered by the city council be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. Just a couple of things. You'll notice that our cameras aren't set up out here anymore. We have new cameras put in, and the young ladies are working from behind the scenes back in their office. And it is being broadcast on YouTube. So, they didn't need to have those cameras in here anymore, so I don't have any help from the, from Alexa to identify those that haven't turned on their microphones. So if you can help me out tonight, make sure that you turn your microphone on before you speak, and check each other out. If somebody forgets, please nudge them a little bit and ask them to turn on their microphone. And if you need be, try to kind of get up close to it so everybody else can hear what's going on around you. So anyway, with that in mind, thank you, everyone, for being here. We appreciate your being here. Looks like we've got a full crowd tonight, so that's awesome. So thank you for being here. We'll begin with Consent Agenda. Item number one is approved minutes of August 18th, 2020. Item number two, place on followed treasurer's report from July 20, of July 2020. Item number three, authorize mayor to execute memorandum of understanding with Lincoln County documenting all allocation and management of funds awarded in the FY 2020 Justice Assistance Grant. Item number four, authorize and approve the renewal of interlocal agreements with Lincoln County and the city of Gothenburg for dispatch services, and agreement with Priority Medical Transport LLC for dispatch services, and an interlocal agreement of memorandum of understanding with the North Platte Public Schools to provide a school resource officer. Item number five, authorize and approve the renewal of two interlocal agreements between the city of North Platte and Lincoln County for maintenance of roads. Item number six, authorize and approve the renewal of an interlocal agreement between the city of North Platte and Lincoln County for emergency management services. And item number seven, adopt resolution to receive six 12-passenger buses equipped with wheelchair lifts. And that's the... And those items passed. Thank you, everyone. On a regular agenda, item number eight, public hearing on ordinance number 4041 and to adopt a budget statement and to appropriate city monies for fiscal year 2020-2021. No action taken until September 3rd of 2020. And this is a public hearing, if anybody wishes to speak.
Mark Wood, I don't know who, Mark Emery. I'd just like to say that I think y'all did a very good job on the budget this year. You held down costs when we needed to. It seemed like all of us departments cooperated very well, and I'm really pleased to look like you did, and it's good to stand up and congratulate my guys for doing a great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Michael Phillips, 3307 Stewart Lane.
Michael Phillips, 3307 Stewart Lane. One of the, I may be misinformed, but I just wanted some clarification. So it's my understanding in the budget that the yellow top recycling bins is going away through the proposed budget. I know we had had a meeting early spring, late winter, about some different ideas there and proposals. So I just wanted to see what the plan was going forward with the yellow top bins and/or additional drop-off sites and what, what the plan was. And is that going to be, take effect with the budget approval, or will that be another decision down the road?
Lane, did you want, Matt, did you want to speak on this? Lane, if you'd be so kind, would you like to speak on that?
Lane Gross, Public Service Director. One of the options, or we had a number of options back in late January, early February, that we gave to the council on recycling and the costs. And when we were tasked with looking at budget cuts, one of the things we looked at, we took the... There was a community survey done on recycling, and we took the results of that, and through the different questions that were asked, it was determined that going to drop-off points only would have very little effect on the volume of recycling, because most, about half the people said there, about 70% of the people said that they would use drop-off sites if the yellow tops went away. And so with the difference in volumes, we felt that the cost savings would be about $140,000 a year. To go to drop-off spots only, we have seven right now. We'd be adding two to three more drop-off, drop-off sites around the city and going to that and removing the yellow top containers. One of the biggest issues we have is with the yellow tops, the co-mingled recyclables is finding markets for that. Right now, we're sitting on about six truckloads of recyclables of the co-mingled, because we just don't have a market for that. No one's taking those at this time. Whereas the drop-offs being sorted, as the people put them in the different spots on the drop-off containers, there are better markets for the drop-offs. And so that is why we had proposed going with, getting rid of the yellow top containers for the cost savings, and also because we have a better chance of being able to get rid of the recyclables. And we fear that it's not going to be a huge drop, maybe a 10% drop in the amount of tonnages that we receive every month going to the drop-offs only. That's, that's using the information from the surveys that we did. You know, we have had, I have, I've had one call of a person really wanting to keep the yellow tops. I know they're convenient. People like having the convenience right outside the door. But that's kind of where we drew our conclusions, to go with proposing only the drop-off locations.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Lane, am I to understand that the way thing?
Thanks, Al. The way things are currently situated, with co-mingled products, that there is no market for that?
Correct.
So what do we do with that material that's collected?
Right now, we're sitting on it, hoping a market opens up. I did get a come call today with a possible recycler in Denver that may take the co-mingled, but it's going to depend on what we have in it and how much contamination there is. I have to follow up on that. But that's kind of a one-time deal right now with the six truckloads that we have.
So right now, essentially, we're having to store that material
Correct.
until such time, hopefully,
Right.
we can, we can either sell it or give it away, or haul it to Ogallala at our expense.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Ty?
Lane, either you or Matt, just to clarify to Mr. Phillips's question, was, does the passage of the budget adopt this change, or is that a secondary decision at a different time, or does the passage of the budget in essence adopt this change?
I guess it's my understanding that the passage of the budget would adopt it starting October 1st. Now, with, there's about 3,700, 3,600 out of our 8,700 households that actually have the yellow top containers. And so I will tell you with the manpower and stuff we have, it won't be an overnight thing with those when we get pulled. We just won't be able to pick them up right away, but it'll take some time to get those pulled. Now with the yellow tops, the grant that we received those under is over, and so we can repurpose those, and we can buy new lids and just use those as regular trash cans, which will save us some money over the next three years instead of having to buy replacements. I believe when the program started, there was just one or two items that were collected, and the recycler at the time did the collection of those, and when that outfit went out of business, the city took over the collection of that, and we also added some more items, but kind of created a problem. Trying to be a help, but it kind of created a problem having more co-mingled items. We do have quite a bit of contamination quite often with that, and when the loads are too contaminated, it does cause us to have to take some to the landfill, because there's been too much garbage and too much other things in it. Fourth of July was really bad this year. We had so many fireworks in our couple loads that we had to take that to the landfill. So I mean, unfortunately, they're not always used like they should either. I'd love to be able to keep that, but it's, it's pretty tough right now.
Thank you.
Just a blank statement. The more I've been thinking about this in the last two or three weeks, I'd hate to see us lose what we've gained so far in this community when it comes to recycling. The more I think about it, the more I'm afraid that if we get rid of the yellow curb, or the yellow lid, that people are going to do it for a month, and then find out it's kind of turned into a pain, and then we're going to see more and more people not doing it, which is also going to increase our tonnage going to the landfill, which is going to cost us X amount of money, correct? And I know we've adopted this while the budget for Thursday, but I don't know. The more I think about it, the more I'd hate to see us lose that. And I know there was some dialogue at last, me, not maybe charging $2 or $3. I don't know where that went, but anyway, I just wanted everybody to know my point. I'd, I'd hate to lose it.
When we run the numbers, you know, about 55% of the people said that if the yellow tops went away, they would still recycle. Or that, no, and when we ran the numbers, that they, we asked if they would pay for recycling. About 50% said they would pay, and 50% said they wouldn't, so out of those 3,600, we basically dropped that in half. Now the numbers lessen the more we have to charge. The hard part is if you take that number in half, so about 1,800, we'd be in about the $8 to $9 range per household per month. And only about 25 to 30% said they'd be willing to pay more than $6 or $7 a month for recycling. So we don't know what the exact number would be once we had to charge for that. And it might take a year or two to get that number stabilized and know exactly what the charge is going to have to be, but it's, it's more than just a couple dollars. It's probably more in the $7 to $10 range per household. It is an option, but I mean, we still may not have that, we'll still lose some participation now. You know, we have a lot of people that already use the drop-offs. When you look at 8,700 households and 3,600 of them actually use the yellow tops, and on the survey, it was about 70% said they use the yellow tops, and 30% said they went to the drop-off locations. However, those numbers don't quite correlate, so it was probably skewed a little bit to the people that use yellow tops as far as answering the survey. But, you know, there are a good percentage of people that uses the drop-off points also, so. I don't know what, I don't know what it'll do, if they disappear, Jim, as far as where our total loss would be.
I know this is a very unusual year, but, and we don't have markets right now, but what if we do next year? And then we got rid of the program.
And that's, the hardest part with recycling has been over the years, is it's very up and down. What's, what's high market's one year and what's not the next year. I mean, the best scenario is to try and get something stable for the citizens of North Platte that's not going to change year to year. That's a stable program here on out, that we don't have to worry about having this dialogue every few years. It's going to be a stable program from here on out. And, you know, the one thing we need to look at, Lincoln just dropped their drop-off points from 15 in the city down to six. They, we have as many drop-off points in the city of North Platte as the city of Lincoln does, and you know, we're one tenth the size. So I mean, we have, per person, we have a lot of drop-off sites.
Lane, will this, will this increase the tonnage that we have to ship over to the landfill by a big number?
It's not a huge number, but there is an increase, and that's what, we figured those numbers into the budget as well, of what, what the cost is for recycling compared to what it'll be for landfill. And of course, you know, our actual cost per ton for recycling is more than our cost per landfill. So I mean, it's, there's an increase at the landfill cost, but there's a decrease on the other end of it, so.
Thank you.
One thing we got to consider too, I'm sorry, Andrew, just real quick. The other thing we got to think about, it's the right thing to do.
It is.
You know, in today's world, this is the right thing to do, even if it's going to lose a little bit, something we got to think about.
I don't disagree with you, Jim, as far as recycling is the right thing to do. We just had to look at the budget and look at numbers, so, Andrew.
How long will it take you to roll out the extras, you know, locations, you know, as we add those in?
We're working with Mona on a bunch of grants to get more drop-off roll-offs, and sort of just depend on those grants if we can get equipment purchased before we be able to open those others.
That's why I was asking, you know, if you're looking at taking those out in October, let's say starting October 1st, you know, and you don't add spots until
There'll be a little bit of a lag.
April, May, June, you know?
Right.
Did you factor that into the equation?
I don't have a good answer. I mean, we have the six spots, seven spots around town already, but to add those three or four more, those would not be added until we get the equipment. And that's, that depends on the grants. We've applied for more than one grant, so just depends on when those grants.
I know you had prospective sites. Did you lock in those sites that, you know, they'd be okay with us if we do get these?
A couple of them are city-owned sites. We have one other one, we have a couple other possible locations that would be private, you know, on some commercial property. We have not locked those in yet.
Okay.
But we have a couple of options.
You know, I agree with Jim's point about it being a good and the right thing to do, but as I've looked, looked into this, I'm concerned that the yellow tops aren't modern and don't serve as effective of a role. I mean, there, I know a lot of communities have started to go into multiple sort types of bins and those types of things. And so I'm generally in favor of, of moving as, as you've proposed, but then trying to bring an education promotional effort with the additional sorting locations. And it may be in our future to have some type of neighborhood or further point where the stuff sorted. I mean, I think, as you look into this, a real problem is with the yellow tops and that type of style of recycling is how contaminated it is. And if, if I'm wrong on that issue, if somebody in the audience knows a lot more about this than I do, I'd encourage them to speak up. But I, I, I think a lot of communities are moving away from curbside, not just because of the financial dynamics, because it's, it's kind of bad recycling, and they're starting to focus efforts more on educating sorting-based recycling. I don't know if that's the right term, but I, I guess is, do I have, do I have the right impression of that, do you think?
That, that's what my research has shown also, Ty, that, you know, the, the co-mingled just is really hard, because it has to be handled again as far as to sort that material, and then the contamination that goes in with it, you know. You probably end up with 70 to 85% of that that's actually being able to recycle because of the contamination and things, and it's more labor-intensive. And so having it where it's pre-sorted, either at a drop-off location or multiple bins, which, you know, we looked at the option of multiple bins also, there's a couple of issues with that as far as most of the alleys don't have room for people to have two or three. for people to have two or three containers for recyclables. And then the cost of the multiple bins also. And you're still only limiting to maybe three or four different materials when at the drop-offs, we can possibly take five or six different materials, so.
Lane, if you have containers for more than one material, does that mean you're going to have to run a separate truck for each one of those materials? Or how does that work?
It's a drop, it's a roll-off with separate containers on it. So you also make one trip and they can then sort it, you know, each container lifts off with a forklift and they can put it in the right place at the recycling facility.
I mean, no, if we had segregated recycling at the curb.
Oh, then, then we would either have to buy trucks, where they have trucks that have two different bins and they're much more expensive and that way. But you probably still have to make more than one trip because if you're taking more than two different items, you'd have to have more than one tri- truck to take those items.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lane.
Mona Anderson, Keep North Platte, Lincoln County Beautiful. You guys might have guessed that we kind of have a little bit of a different view. Not that I want to argue with Lane because we've talked about it a lot, a lot, on the different, the different ways that we could recycle and recycle properly, properly in our community. But we believe that by taking back the curbside bins, we're actually kind of moving a little bit backwards. Realize that there is those constraints, budget constraints, for those services. But one of the options that we have talked about is doing maybe just like two items that we would take in the yellow top bins that could be sorted at the recycling center, the local recycling center. Right now, we have two different recyclers doing two different, two, two different jobs, trying to market separately, and that doesn't really work. So if there is either the local recycling center or another recycling, recycler in our region that could possibly take those materials, and maybe it's plastic and cardboard, it's easily separated, and we could still run the curbside program, and maybe there would be a fee, a charge to those people who want to keep their curbside bins. If they want to pay ten dollars, why don't we give them the option of letting them pay ten dollars if they want to keep their curbside bin? I think we're taking the option, that option away from people when we don't let them make that decision on their own. We may not get as much recyclable material. I know we won't. But we, we think about how much of that stuff is going to the landfill. Not only are we looking at tipping fees, but eventually there's a landfill that's going to fill up. And the cost to increase the landfill is millions of dollars. Of course, that's not the city's costs, but that will then be passed on to the, to the residents. So eventually, they're going to be paying an additional ten dollars a month anyway because, just for trash pickup. So, so, you know, you've got to take that into consideration as well. I know it's maybe, we have gotten a lot of phone calls in our office about curbside and wanting to keep curbside and what are we thinking, getting rid of it? And, and I, I would rather see drop-off sites and, and a limited curbside than drop-off only. But if we can only get drop-off, increasing those sites, like Lane said, we are working on a grant to get some new roll-off for those drop-off sites. So anyway, that's my opinion. Thanks.
Lane, is there an, do you have a, a dead-set data how long Ogallala is going to remain open?
When I renewed our contract with Ogallala last year, they said they have a seventy-plus lifespan before they run out of room at their current location. That's their expected lifespan right now. Seventy years. I guess my, and, you know, we looked at the options as far as maybe just one or two items in the, in the yellow tops. And I guess my only question on that is if people are going to recycle those other items that they would still have to take to a drop-off location. If we're sending trucks down the alleyways, burning that fuel, plus they're going then take their stuff to the drop-off points, when we look at the total effect, if we're looking at the environment, is it worth it to send those extra trucks down the alleys when you're maybe still going to be going to the drop-off points as well? That'd be my, I mean, I'd love to be able to find a good solution to keep these. I just don't, you know, we, we looked at the different options and from before you guys back last spring, so.
Lane, which materials are you having trouble getting rid of?
Right now, it's just the co-mingled items. When you have, we have cardboard, we have paper, we have tin cans, aluminum cans and plastic all mixed together. That's, it's just a problem of being co-mingled because then it has to be sorted at some other facility and that's, you know, more labor. And when the markets are as low as they are, there's no money in those, in that to take, to sort it, to then try and sell it. You know, when they're, when the markets are low, at least when they're already sorted, when they're pre-sorted, when the people put them in the different bins, then it's, you know, bail it and you can sell it. Now, now it's having one more step to have to handle it. That's, that's the main problem.
So you can actually sell cardboard and paper today?
There's, there's markets for it. They're very low right now. The markets are as low as they've been in recent history as far as per ton on those things, but.
I know you and I have talked a little bit about maybe even recycling some of those organic materials, the paper and the cardboard through a composting system that's reasonably close. Does it make sense to use that as an option, as a composting material, as opposed to spending money trying to recycle it?
That, that is an option. I mean, as far as, as long as there's still markets for it, you know, for the cardboard and the paper, when it's still worth something, I think it makes sense to still recycle it. But there is, there is options with our organic material in our composting site where we can add that to the compost and it makes good compost, so. It's, like I said, I've had, I've had one phone call in my office, but I know there's quite a few people, you know, the people that use the yellow tops, use them for a reason because they're very passionate about it. And I don't fault them for that because it's, it's a good program. And I, I support recycling a hundred percent. We just had to look at options and that's where we're at.
This is a public hearing. Does anybody else wish to speak? Does anybody wish to make a motion to close public hearing? Make a motion to close it.
Second.
Quick question. So if we vote on the budget, I don't, I know we're not going to prove it tonight, but is that effectively going to shut down the yellow top containers? Is that what we're doing?
The staffing, and Lane, you correct me if I'm wrong on this, but as part of the reduction in recycling, the staffing to pick up the yellow tops is removed. And so then, yes, recycling, curbside service would be eliminated.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Oh, sorry.
And public hearing's been closed. Hey, since there's no action taken on this item, we'll just move right on to item number nine, which is public hearing and resolution setting the property tax rate for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. No action taken until September 3rd. This is a public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak on this item?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
And public hearing is closed. And as I said, there's no action taken on this item as well, so we'll move into item number 10. Item number 10 is adopt ordinance number 4036, amending chapter 151 Housing Maintenance and Occupancy Code, section 151 of the City of North Platte Code of Ordinances relating to adoption of the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code as amended on second reading.
Mayor Livingston, would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
An ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, amending chapter 151 Housing Maintenance and Occupancy Code, sections 151 dot 001 through 151 dot 999, related to the adoption of the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code as amended, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof in pamphlet form.
I move to adopt ordinance number 4036, amending chapter 151 Housing Maintenance and Occupancy Code, section 151 of the City of North Platte Code of Ordinances relating to adoption of the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code as amended on second reading.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, sir. This is not a public hearing, but you're welcome to come up and say a few words if you don't mind.
My name's Dean Di, and I, I'm a volunteer. I, I was electrician on the railroad and I, I did well there and I, I'm a full-time volunteer now. And I just wondered if you folks had considered why we want to adopt international rules in our town? You know, this, this country was founded on principles that are different than everywhere else in the world. And I don't see how, why we want to keep increasing, having international make decisions for us. I've been to the housing authority meeting over here and rules come down all the time. And a lot of them irritate the residents over there. And, and they're just always agreed to. It's, it's easy to just say, yes, 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 we'll, we'll agree to anything like that. And I just wonder if you folks realize that in town here, you have a variety of different kinds of people. There's rich people, there's all the way down to poorest people. And they all live under conditions that are either very prosperous or very bad. And if you knew any of those people in person, you would see why I have a little grievance with that because everybody's different. They're just like snowflakes. Everybody's different. And a lot of times when you get complaints about something going on in a neighborhood, it's just, sometimes just a busybody that causes trouble. And last time I listened to you discuss this, and, and what I think allowed everybody to agree to pass it the way it is, is that when the discussions came up about going in people's yards and pestering them about fire pit or, or whatever, that you guys said, the authorities said we would just not do that, that we won't do that. Well, how, is that, is that going to be written into the, the law then? Or, or is that just going to be up to the authorities in charge? Do you know? Is there, is there a way that we can amend that before you pass?
Dean, I wish you would have been here when we were discussing this. We probably went, what, two hours? I don't know how long we talked about it, but all those questions were answered. You can believe it or not, but I don't think our people are going to be running around pestering people in their backyards. The only time more than likely of something like that comes as, is a result of a complaint from someone.
I know, it's the weed problem.
Sure.
Is what we deal with. I belong to the Bree and Church and I, I'm, I'm helping people all the time. And a lot of times, we'll help people that, that are, are stuck in a situation and they don't take care of their yard, it's weedy. And then they get these here letters that say they're going to be charged a five-hundred-dollar fine or something. And it just really depresses people around town here. And I, I really appreciate beautiful places. And a lot of people that have the money to do it, they'll have a beautiful yard. But they put fertilizer in it, water and all kinds of maintenance. And, and then what's the product of that? It's all going to go in the trash barrel unless, unless they, they have a way to recycle that. And, you know, everybody's different. And so I just appreciate your consideration on that. And how, how am I going to know that you, you will not mess with somebody's fire pit or, or cause them trouble in their backyard? I'd like to know. So I'll just, if there's any questions, I'm glad to answer questions on that. Or I'll just hope that you have a little more discussion about it. I know you were hoping to just buzz through this, but.
Thank you, Dean. We appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd, I'd like to make a, a comment for one thing, and then I'd like to offer some amendments for the council to consider to the, to the International Property Maintenance Code. I made a statement here, oh, I don't know, maybe the last meeting, maybe the meeting before, and I actually misspoke about the number of states in our country that have adopted this International Property Maintenance Code. I think I said it was, we were one of two. I was told that I was incorrect. I think it's something like forty-six or seven states in the United States have actually adopted this code. So I wanted to express my remorse and maybe my embarrassment for, for saying something was incorrect. And I wanted to bring that to your attention. Regarding the amendments, I, Angela had printed off an email that I sent to Mr. Kibben and to Judy Clark about some amendments that I was considering, was hoping that we would consider as a council. I've gotten a number of, had a number of contacts with people particularly about the fire pits. Some people that I've talked to have got fire pits that are made out of brick. Some people have got fire pits that are made out of steel truck wheels that are still within a three-foot diameter characteristic that's required by the code. And so on the fire pits in particular, I would like to see us, where it says, "Fire pits shall be commercially manufactured with non-combustible and a commercially man-" "Fire pits shall be commercially manufactured with commerc-, with non-combustible material and a commercially manufactured grate to cover it. The holes on the grate shall be no longer than one quarter of an inch." I'd like to, to remove commercially manufactured and have that say, "Fire pits shall be constructed with non-combustible material and a grate to cover it. The holes on the grate shall be no longer than one, no larger than one quarter of an inch." And then under number seven, where it addresses the, the lids, it says currently, "Commercially manufactured fire pits with lids and screen sides do not require an open burn permit because the fire is considered contained." I would like that to be revised to say, "Fire pits with lids and screens which meet the construction requirements of the ordinance do not require an open burn permit because the fire is considered to be contained." And then under section 302.8, the way it's currently worded, it says, "Except as provided for in," excuse me. Yeah, "Except as provided for in other regulations, inoperative or unlicensed motor vehicles shall not be parked, kept or stored on any premises. And vehicles shall not at any time be in a state of major disassembly, disrepair or in the process of being stripped or dismantled. Painting of vehicles is prohibited unless conducted in an approved spray booth. With the exception, a vehicle of any type is permitted to undergo major overhaul, including bodywork, provided such work is performed inside a structure or an enclosed area with, designed and approved for such purposes." I would, I would like to amend that to say, "Except as provided for in other regulations inoperative or unlicensed." inoperative or unlicensed motor vehicles shall not be parked, kept, or stored on any premises, and vehicles shall not at any time be in a state of major disassembly, disrepair, or in the process of being stripped or dismantled. Spray painting of a vehicle of any type shall be conducted inside a completely enclosed building or structure," thereby removing an approved paint booth from that code, so that if I want to repaint my car inside my garage, I would be able to do that without having run afoul of the statute. And under the exception, "A vehicle of any type is permitted to undergo major overhaul, including bodywork, provided that such work is performed inside a structure or similarly enclosed area and designed for such purposes," again, removing the word "approved." And then, under section 305.3, we currently say, amend to read, "Interior surfaces, interior surfaces, including windows and doors, shall be maintained. Cracked or loose plaster, decayed wood, and other defective surface conditions shall be corrected." I would like to amend that to remove the word "cracked" or and say, amend to read, "Interior surfaces, interior surfaces, including windows and doors, shall be maintained. Loose plaster, decayed wood, and other defective surface conditions shall be corrected." And those are the amendments that I would like the council to consider. So I guess I would make a motion. Is that what I need to do? Make a motion to offer an amendment to the code to adopt these revisions to the code as I've read them?
I'll second. Would like to talk about the fire pit thing for a minute, because I've had a number of people kind of concerned about this. Terry, this might be a good question for you. Does this really need to be included in this property maintenance code? Because my understanding is this may be covered in other areas, and if those other areas would update in the future, we're going to have to come back and update this. I am afraid it's sending a bad connotation to people. I heard early on that the idea here was, by putting it in here, we're just keeping things consistent, better communication. But I'm worried that keeping that in there, is it really necessary? And is it putting a bad connotation with this that isn't appropriate? So if you have any thoughts on that, I appreciate knowing them.
Sure. And I just, I saw these this afternoon, Ed. If you want to send them to me next time, I'm happy to look. That's all right. But it ties, point is a good one. I think this, the most recently enacted ordinance containing language, that it supersedes or revokes anything that is inconsistent with this, would say that this will trump or take priority over anything in conflict with it. So, yeah, I think if you intend to not address it through the International Property Code, then you should probably strike the whole section.
Is this area, is this area, it's included in other ordinance or code that we have? Is that correct?
I think it's under the fire code.
Under the fire code?
The chief affirms that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see that area struck from this particular code. But if, but if the folks from the city that are out there forcing to see a great value in it, I mean, it's open-minded. I guess I'm just concerned, do we really need to have it twice? Because then if it's updated in the other spot, are we going to be coming back to this spot as well?
You need amendment to the amendment.
Yeah.
I might.
You're going to have me so confused. I don't know what you're going to be building on here pretty quick.
I'm sorry. I guess I'd move that we strike the fire pit sections from proposed code as an amendment to Ed's amendment.
I'll second that. Wow. Okay, while we're at it. I know, I don't see our fire marshal here. But Ed mentioned, I'm a little worried about the painting inside of a garage. I don't know what that's going to cause. Is there, I don't want somebody getting themselves blowed up inside a garage because we changed something in here that says it's okay to paint a car inside a garage. And I'm certainly not an expert on this, but it seems to me the fumes that you would have inside of the garage would cause me some concern. So I'd be a little leery about changing something of that nature until you spoke with somebody that knows something about where you should paint or not paint. I would not want to be enclosed somewhere where there's not a lot of space in some of these garages. But I guess I'm looking for some expertise here. But like I say, the fire marshal's not here, so. Judy, can you help us?
Dennis can help.
Dennis Thompson, City Fire Chief. I'm no expert either, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the painting in those spaces, certainly ventilation's an issue for us, fumes. If there's gas-powered furnaces or other types of appliances or equipment, all those things concern us. That's what we're going to respond to. If we have a problem with any of that or a ventilation problem that fumes overcome somebody, certainly those are things we're going to deal with. But even more so, a lot of that, in terms of paint booths and things, is regulated strictly by EPA. That has far more power than we even have. So those are certainly valid issues and concerns and things that we too want to make sure are being addressed appropriately and given due consideration moving forward. So.
All right, thank you. Since, I'm totally confused now, but since we have so many motions going on here, how about we table this until the third reading, and we'll go through all these and try to make those corrections of what everybody's talking about tonight? Would that be fair?
I think technically, I think technically that puts us back to the second reading.
Oh, well, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that either, unless y'all do. But it'd be nice if you came in a little sooner so we can look at these things, so we can ask these questions before we come in here, because there's no way I could answer these. And obviously, we don't have people in the room that can. So if you don't mind, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Matt.
Just in Ed's defense, he did bring this to both Judy and I. And we did understand and agree that these amendments would be okay.
Oh.
And so.
Well, if that were the case, then let's move on. If we're okay with these amendments that are being made?
We're still dealing with amendment to the amendment, which is on the fire pits being struck right now. And then we go back to the first amendment, which is Ed's amendment, after we vote on.
I guess what I might suggest if.
How about we start over?
This is okay. If we could continue with the vote on my request to eliminate the fire pit section, and then if we would come back for third reading, and your, then the fire department has concerns with that issue or reason we shouldn't, could that be reconsidered then at third reading? I guess I would ask.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Okay, so, let's back up a second. So we're going to vote on your amendment to remove, strike the fire pit? Is that what I'm being asked? So shall we just vote on that at this point in time?
We vote on that, and then we have to vote on Ed's.
Okay.
Or do I need to just withdraw my amendment and vote on Todd's?
No, if he removed his and you removed yours, and then he can make his again. Because his is stacked on top of yours.
So you need to remove yours, then I remove mine? And then you, off yours.
Let's vote on this one and then vote on that.
All right, so. So right now, there's amendment to strike the fire pit? If we can vote on it? Oh, yes, please. Yeah, please, W A M.
No, I'm not going to. I just want to make sure for the public that they understand that by you striking the fire pit regulations out of this section really does not strike those regulations, because they are in the city code of ordinances under the fire code. So just by striking it out of here, they still have to abide by those in the fire code. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
Another question, these are already.
Sorry. Another question. These are already written in the current city, not just in the fire code, but in our current building codes, right? So for them to be removed, you would have to actually go back in and remove the original ordinance, too. You'd have to revoke the original ordinance. Because otherwise, we're not really removing anything, unless you remove it here, and then we pass the.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that the fire pits are still going to be regulated as they are currently regulated, which is what you're seeing in this international property maintenance.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with our regulations on this. I have a problem with putting it in the property maintenance code.
Well, I think it reads simple. I mean, just say, "The fire pits shall be in compliance with the city fire code, period." We end it there. Is that okay? Let's just do it that way. That's what it has to be. It's in there, but then you go look to the fire code. I think it's simple rather than try to get.
That's what I've got in mind, Jim, yes.
So in that case, you'd have to withdraw and revise your amendment.
Let's try this again. I guess, let's withdraw that amendment and move that we strike the fire pit section as is and replace it with a reference to the fire code regarding.
What Jim just suggested, fire. Say, "The fire pits shall be in compliance with the city fire code, period."
Yes.
Second.
From right there, we didn't really change anything.
No, we haven't changed anything.
And so that motion passes. Okay, now where are we? Now we have it. All right. Now, would you repeat? Does anybody want to repeat what that amendment is? So I'm clear on it?
Ed's?
You want me to reread it, Dwight?
Whatever your amendment was, yes, please.
Just for the fire pits or the entire thing?
The whole thing. That way, everybody's clear on what they're voting on.
Okay.
And me, too. We struck the fire.
Excuse me?
No, go ahead, please.
Okay, fire pits.
You don't need to do that.
No, you don't have to worry about. Fire pits done. Don't have to worry about the fire pit.
Skip the fire pit and move on to your other two items.
Whatever your amendment was.
Okay, my other two amendments were, amend section 302.8 to say, "Except as provided for and other regulations, inoperative or unlicensed motor vehicles shall not be parked, kept, or stored on any premises, and vehicles shall not at any time be in a state of major disassembly, disrepair, or in the process of being stripped or dismantled. Spray painting of a vehicle of any type shall be conducted inside a completely enclosed building or structure. Exception, a vehicle of any type is permitted to undergo major overhaul, including bodywork, provided that such work is performed inside a structure or similarly enclosed area and designed for such purposes." And then under section 305.3, amended, it would be amended to say, amend to read, "Interior surfaces, interior surfaces, including windows and doors, shall be maintained. Loose plaster, decayed wood, and other defective surface conditions shall be corrected."
I will, however, need a second. Yes. And that motion passes. Yes, whatever that main motion was.
Main motion hasn't been.
Has been, okay. Okay, and that motion passes as well. All right, are we okay now? All right, on to item number 11. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate everything you had to say about this. We want to make sure that we get this thing right. So thank you for that. Item number 11, adopt ordinance number 4039 in recommendation by the North Platte Planning Commission to rezone certain lands from R3 Dwelling District to I1 Light Industrial District located 1815 East Sixth Street and 1905 East Sixth Street on property described as all of Lot 8 except the west 48 feet and south 150.66 feet, Platte View subdivision, North Platte, Nebraska, on second reading.
Would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
An ordinance of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, rezoning all of Lot 8 except the west 89 feet of the south 150.66 feet, Platte View subdivision, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, from an R3 Dwelling District to an I1 Industrial District, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date and publication thereof.
Do we have a motion yet?
Well, the thing is about the motion, there's no indication inside the packet asking for it, waived, but yet in the proposed motion that had voted. Was that something that was asked for or not? I don't know which one to do.
We kind of jumped over that last meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Good question.
They didn't specifically request it, but as all developers or people who want to rezone property, they would prefer if you could waive it. But they respectfully, you know, leave it up to you.
Okay.
I will move that we waive the three required readings on ordinance number 4039.
Second.
Do we know what's being proposed to be constructed there? I know it said warehouses is what I read. I'm kind of curious to know what types of construction's going to go in there?
That's exactly just larger industrial-sized storage areas, just large buildings. That is his overall plan. I don't think it's going to happen really, really quickly. He's just doing one, and as he gets it rented out or occupied, then he'll build another one.
So these will be rental properties primarily?
Yeah, kind of like a mini storage, except they would just be large buildings for like maybe an RV or something like that. That's what he was talking about when he discussed it. Yeah, he's talking maybe three, four buildings, but it's a long-range plan.
Have you had any neighbor concerns, Judy?
No, I didn't receive any complaints from anyone in that area.
So this would be more of a commercial enterprise than it would be for an industrial?
I guess it depends on what you feel is commercial versus industrial. But, yeah, you could see it as a commercial. But if you do it in a commercial, then you have to go through a conditional use. So if you would rezone it to a commercial zone, you would have to go through a conditional use to put in warehouse storage units. Whereas in an industrial zone area, you can just do that as permitted.
I'm not opposed to it. I just was kind of curious, you know, what was proposed to go out there. And that motion passes.
I now move to adopt ordinance number 4039 in recommendation by the City Planning Commission to rezone certain land from an R3 Dwelling District to an I1 Light Industrial District located at 1815 East Sixth Street and 1905 East Sixth Street on property described as all of Lot 8 except the west 48 feet and south 150.66 feet, Platte View subdivision, North Platte, Nebraska.
Second.
And that motion passes as well. Item number 12, accept certificate of a completion and assessment schedule for sewer extension district number 349 on South Buffalo Bill Avenue, 4400 to 4500 block, to serve Otter First Subdivision and scheduled to sit as Board of Equalization on September 15, 2020.
I move to accept certificate of completion in the assessment schedules for sewer extension district number 349 and scheduled to sit as Board of Equalization on September 15, 2020.
Second.
And that motion passes. Item number 13, accept certificate of completion and schedule of benefits for Water Connection District number 22 on East 10th Street from the Roosevelt intersection to 1,050 feet east and scheduled to sit on the Board of Equalization on September 15, 2020. and scheduled to sit on a board of equalization on September 15, 2020.
I move to accept certificate of completion and the schedule of benefits for Water Connection District number 22 and scheduled to sit as a board of equalization on September 15, 2020.
Second.
And that motion passes. Item number 14, golf course request for proposal, RFP, for the purchase, lease, or lease to purchase of Iron Eagle Golf Course in North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
I move to authorize administration to issue a request for proposal for the purchase, lease, or lease to purchase of Iron Eagle Golf Course in North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick comment. And I understand with the time of year, that having a tighter timeframe on this is probably a good idea. I might suggest that you consider in the RFP an ability, if somebody provides you interest by the 29th, to give them maybe 15 additional days or something of that nature to respond. Just a little concerned about a 27-day turnaround on something of this magnitude. But I also understand the time of year, if somebody would want to come in getting ready for next year. And so I might, as long as, I just might suggest you keep the flexibility in the RFP to provide an interested party with a little additional time. Example, somebody from out of state or whatnot would come in and express an interest in.
Councilman Lucas, I'm a firm believer that the date that the proposals are due are the cutoff date. If the council agrees, then I would be happy to extend the date by an additional 15 days. But when we advertise this, it will be advertised as the due date is X and that will be when we.
Once you review some that came in on the 2.6, then have the flexibility, if they need an extra two weeks, to let them have it.
And oftentimes throughout the proposal process, coming from the world I came from, we would, if our time period for putting together a proposal and submitting it is not long enough, the question and answer period, we will get several questions asking if there is any opportunity to extend the deadline date.
So I understand program 2.6 is that they get the question extended by September 15. Maybe that helps a little bit.
That's correct. Matt, from the world that you were in before with these types of RFPs and whatnot, do you feel the turnaround time sufficient on this?
Two weeks is probably warranted, two additional weeks is probably warranted.
I would feel more comfortable with it with just a slightly longer period for response, but I do also understand the time of year and people are going to be, if there's a party, we're going to need to get them ready for next year too. So anyway, I'm in favor of it, I just wanted to talk about that timeframe real briefly.
And that motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item number 15 is claims.
Move to approve the claim.
Second.
That motion passes.
Second.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye. Aye, aye, Captain.
Thank you, everyone.